Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the December 15th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Bashir Tash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance teaches us right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Please note that tonight, Item 6B, city staff received a memo today requesting that, from the applicant, requesting that the item be pulled from the agenda and referred back to staff, and so the public hearing on Item 6B will not take place tonight. So, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here to speak on the non-consent public hearing, Items 6A and 6B, this is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when those items are later called in the meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Oh, I think we might have missed 3B, non-agenda public statements.
Agenda Item 3B, Non-Agenda Item Public Statements.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no speakers, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless a staff member or a commissioner requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion to adopt the consent items?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Bashir Tash, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Lomas. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade and Commissioner Biddle absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the Commission will vote on all items in a single motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? If so, please come forward and state your name and request removal. Seeing no members of the audience wishing to remove an item, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
I'd like to remove Item Number 5B for further discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Does any commissioner wish to remove any additional consent public hearing items? All right. At this time, the consent public hearing on Item 5A is now closed, with 5B moving to the non-consent public hearing portion of the agenda. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing, Item 5A, incorporating all staff memorandum and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Neal, may I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Bashir Tash.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade and Commissioner Biddle absent, with Item 5B being removed from consent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will then be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you prefer, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the process by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Boyle, would you please provide us your staff report on public hearing, Item 6A?
Thank you, Chair Kater. Commissioners, I'd like to introduce the Commission to Principal Planner, Tony Haquez. He'll be making your presentation this evening.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Tony Haquez, Principal Planner with Development Services Department. I'm here to present Item A, Conditional Use Permit 22-01-60. The project was scheduled for December 1st, 2022, for consideration by your Commission. However, subsequent to distribution of the staff report, additional comments or correspondence was received. Therefore, staff requested a two-week continuance to provide additional time to address the comments. Those comments with staff's response are attached in the current staff report. The site is located at 9600 Retail Drive at the west end of the Promenade in northwest Bakersfield. It is zoned C2 Regional Commercial. Let me go back one. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an establishment selling alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption, where such use is a primary business in the C2 District. The proposal would facilitate a 2,600-square-foot cocktail bar of a multi-tenant commercial building. The hours of operation are 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, with evening security being provided. The family-owned business will have up to 12 employees per shift. The applicant notes they are owners of the Whiskey Barrel Saloon located at 2816 Callaway Suite 101, and have been in the cocktail bar business for 14 years. Their lease is ending, and the new location is in close proximity to their previous location. The applicant notes they are owners of the Whiskey Barrel, excuse me. Three comment letters were received in support from the property owner and surrounding business owners of the applicant's current location. Several comments letters were received in opposition by the new adjacent property owner, Russell Garner with Carson Property Management, and those associated with his tenant, Sylvan Learning. Should your Commission approve this conditional use permit, establishment selling alcohol beverages for onsite consumption, staff notes the applicant will be required to obtain and comply with any additional restrictions associated with California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control licensing. The staff report states specific findings that must be made in order for the Commission to approve the requested conditional use permit, and in accordance with these required findings and as condition, staff finds, 1, an establishment would occupy currently vacant suites; 2, the establishment would provide a place for adults to socialize; and 3, the project would result in a development that is consistent with the intent of both Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan and the Bakersfield Municipal Code. In conjunction, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 22-01-60. That concludes my presentation of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Richard Fiddler, and I'm the one that's proposing to get the location. My wife and I, of 33 years, have been self-small business owners in this town since 1993, one of them being a home childcare, home childcare positions, watching multiple children. And then we had a roofing company for the past 18 years, all the way up until we opened the bar. When 2008 approached us, we knew we had to open up another small business. So we tried to figure that out, what we were going to do, and we came up with a bar. Didn't know anything about opening a location. We opened it in the county. We had it for five years. We had to get a CUP for that location, but we realized we were not really knowing what we were doing at that location. We needed to be more in a neighborhood for locals and people to come through and see us at that. We were definitely in a destination in the middle of nowhere, basically, and after 6 o'clock, there was just no customers really coming through there. So that business, we ran it through the lease in its entirety. We did it Thursday, Friday, Saturday only, and that was our income, me, my wife, and my daughter. We ran that building till the lease was up, looked for a new location in the city, and we found the place on Callaway. We're right behind the Dwarfs, north of the Dwarfs, next to a liquor store. We've been there for nine years. We were there for seven years before COVID hit, and we all know what happened there. But when we opened up that business, we knew what we wanted. We wanted something similar to like that's on TV, you know, a neighborhood bar. You know everybody, what they drink, what they do, where they work, and that is what exactly we signed up for. That location was perfect for us. We since then, since kind of outgrowed it. We had a cabaret license, and if you didn't, I'm sure you guys know, but through Bakersfield City Police Department, you have to have a cabaret license to be open till 2:00. We have several, we have a business that runs till 2:00 in the morning, and that's basically about 5% of the businesses that are left in town. We work weekends, we work nights. Okay? Our business basically comes after 8:00 at night. Second shift doesn't even come on till 8:30. That crew works, security bartenders and barbacks work from 8:30 till 2:00 in the morning. Now, to get a cabaret license through the city, you have to go through code enforcement, which is part of your office. Then we go through the fire marshal for occupancy load, and then we go through the chief of police. He has to stamp that for us. We've had the longest-running cabaret license in the cities for the last two years with no complaints on that. They might show up every now and then, but we have basically honored and obeyed through that cabaret license what we need, because they're tied in basically simultaneously through the alcoholic beverage control. They will not issue that if you're a nuisance to the community. Now, I know not everybody consumes alcohol, but what this is, is a 21-and-over establishment. We're kind of low, you know, you could call us a dive bar, local bar, whatever you want to call us. We're not a sports bar, we're not a nightclub, and that's not what we're trying to do. This location, this one is going to be a lounge. This one's going to have couches, sofas, chairs. This one's going to have electronic darts, a VIP room. This one's going to be very swanky. This is not something that we're going to have people outside loitering. This is not a gentleman's club. This is not going to be any type of dispensary liquor store. We're not going to have lights with alcohol displaying. We're not going to be advertising like that. We don't even have a sign at our Whiskey Barrel location now, because we didn't want to overload the parking lot. We have double, for this location right here, we have actually double what we need over here. This has 38 parking spots surrounding that facility. There's five empty suites over there, and we're trying to take up two of them. That probably has 50 cars that maybe roll through it on a daily basis, and on a weekend, probably 20. The Wars is not disputing us. They have children that go there. Everybody in this town has children. We're not trying to ruin that for anybody. But there's no way you're going to let a child at a learning center just walk outside and roam around the parking lot till their parents get there. Everybody, when you drop your kid off, whether it's at daycare, or school, or a pizza parlor, anywhere, there's going to be a parent there, and someone's going to pick him up or be responsible for him. We're trying to make this a place for Bakersfield. We've lived out there for 40 years, me and my wife have, and again, we've been self-employed for the last 29. We didn't take any money from the state. We took our savings to keep that place open, because we didn't know if our land court could even, you know, afford that building, because we knew he has a note for it. So we were just trying to make this an upgrade for us. This is kind of our retirement. We've been doing it 14 years now, and me and my wife and my son basically run that. One of us is always there. My nephew works for us, his wife. This is a family business, whether it's a donut shop, a boutique, or any other family business. This is a small business, and this is what we do. We know how to run a bar. We don't do food, and that's what we do. Our business comes from 9:00 at night on. So we just hope you guys will consider us, because that's what we want. We want that space. It's actually a double-wide suite. The windows are going to be tinted. No one's going to see in it. There's plenty of shrubbery that takes, blocks us from the learning center. I don't know why they're concerned about parking, because all the parking on that spot is for my location at 9600 Retail. It has signs at every location that says 9600, "No Sylvan Parking," but yet they still park there. I've never seen more than four cars at the Sylvan Learning Center, ever, ever. And there's never any cars more than that past 8:00. 8:00, I'm not even at work yet, not even at work yet. So we're working on something that's going to be great for the community and great for the area. It's 100 yards off the beaten path. There's six exits to get out of there. And not to mention, 50% of the people that come to our place after 9:00 Uber and Lyft. They Uber and Lyft out of there. So it's really a scenario, it's a perfect place. When I went to the counter and asked them, "What do I need to do to move my spot?", I'm two parcels over. If you look out the back door of that place, you can throw a rock at my back door at my other building. So we're moving two parcels over. We're going from Whiskey Barrel, we're going to change this to Whiskey. This one's going to be the Whiskey Cocktail Lounge. This one's going to be strictly different, but we didn't want to change the name too much, so we could kind of keep the same clientele, and we didn't move too far. With that being said, I thank you for your time, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you. This is not the time for us to ask questions, but it is the time to welcome any additional speakers in favor of the project. So if there's anyone else who'd like to speak in favor, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Robert Ripley. I'd like to start by thanking you guys for the opportunity to speak. I think the public hearings are a very important part of the way our community makes businesses great. I'll keep it short. Basically, what motivates me to be here today is I'm a customer of the Whiskey Barrel. I've come to know the owner, the family, the small business, small local business, and I know they don't have the same sort of resources that larger businesses may have, so I'm trying to lend my support as an individual to do what I can. I understand that there are some concerns about what kind of clientele a bar might bring to this area. I know that those are the letters that Sylvan may have provided. I can assure you that those concerns are not founded. I'm a customer of the Whiskey Barrel. I'm a homeowner in the Rosedale area. I actually share a zip code with the Whiskey Barrel. I'm a county employee, I'm a father, I'm a member of the community, and those are the people who go to the Whiskey Barrel. It's hard-working men and women of the community who go there to relax, to have a drink, like any local bar would. I think what, part of what makes our community, are these family-owned businesses, these small businesses. And unfortunately, for the past few years, they've had to suffer a pandemic, and I think that a lot of the problems that these businesses faced were sort of, not only the pandemic itself, but the regulations that were put on these businesses, whether it's state or local regulations. And for a business that had to survive these sorts of hardships, I wouldn't want to see another roadblock be put in the way by a local ordinances. I just want to see businesses like this come out of this pandemic, come out of these hard times, as successful as possible, and I'd like to see this business approved. I'm a fan. I've been there. It's, the people are good, and these are members of our community, and they are hard-working people who attend. These aren't miscreants, these aren't criminals, these are construction workers, county employees, teachers, anybody who you'd see at a bar would attend this place, and I love it, and I'd like to see it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers in favor? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name is Cade Brink. I'm going to keep mine pretty short and sweet, too. So I'm 28 years old. I also live here in Bakersfield, California. I started going to the Whiskey Barrel in about 2018. I just popped in one night, tried to have some fun. Behind the bar, I met a guy named Reed back here, who is very welcoming as a busy man, provides great customer service. I continued going every weekend and ended up becoming really good friends with Rick, Robin, and Reed. They're genuinely good people, who know how to make a busy bar a fun, exciting, and especially safe place to hang out. I have brought many of my friends and family there, and it's the only bar I will continue to regularly attend. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers in favor of the project?
Hello, hello. I just want to thank you guys for having me here today.
Before you get started, do you mind sharing your name for the public record?
Yes, so my name is Reed Fiddler. I'm Robin and Richard Fiddler's son. I am a homeowner. I live in this, I live in Bakersfield my whole life. For the last 15 years, my family has owned and operated a bar in the Bakersfield region. This bar has become a staple in the community's nightlife. I have worked at this bar for eight years. My parents are very thorough and hands-on in this business, as it is the only business and income we have as a family. We have made it through the pandemic, when a lot of other businesses did not. My parents currently have over 20,000 invested into this location, whether it's getting the keys, demolition, TIs, tenant upgrades, and I would just hate for them to go into more of a, more of an economic hardship, because we did take a gamble on this location, and we are hoping to further our business and our, and our lives here in the Bakersfield community. And we were just really hoping and approving and praying that you guys grant us this permit. So I thank you guys for your time, and have a good day. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers in favor? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name is Maria Garcia, and I used to work for Whiskey Barrel. I actually am a karaoke host. I'm an independent contractor, and I was working for a different company. Rick and Robin actually helped me to go and get my own business, so now I am my own karaoke company and business owner. I am 40 years old. I worked as a preschool teacher for a long time, and it wasn't until they were able to say, "You can do this. You can have your own business in the city and do this on your own." I was encouraged to do so. I did have two pregnancies while I was working for a very long time at Whiskey Barrel, and if anybody is wondering if you can be safe in a bar and be pregnant, you can. And they, these wonderful people here supported me through that. I was actually a single mother, and these two people came behind me and not only supported me with the job, but supported me, helping me get things just started. Anything I needed, an apartment or anything, these are good people. And that place, that work environment, even though being pregnant was as safe as possible, it allowed me to continue my career as a karaoke host. I do different establishments here in town, and I would not have done that had I not been in an establishment like the Whiskey Barrel. So I hope that you guys continue to support businesses who help other local businesses, such as myself, and it is a safe place. I continue to go there when I can, and they still, you know, it's a good place, and I just hope you guys are able to see that with the encouragement that they give the community. It is a good place to keep around in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience wishing to speak in favor? So please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
How's it going, everybody? I'm Tyler Poole. I own a private gym here in town called The Fit Spot. I'm actually a full-time trainer as well, and I go to the Whiskey Barrel to kick back and relax after a long day, long workouts, you know, exercising, always eating right, you know, always eating healthy, but, you know, you got to have balance in life, right? You got to have balance. Thank you guys for letting me speak today. Thank you, Commission. I am a customer of the Whiskey Barrel for a long time. I'm not going to lie. Basically, became really good friends with Rick and Reed and Robin, and just the whole family. I love that it's a family-owned business. I'd rather give my money to family-owned businesses and local businesses over big corporations, and I've always been that way. It's a great place, it's great music, great environment, and you don't see a lot of drama there. Everyone gets along, everyone has fun, and everyone goes home and Ubers home at 2:00 PM, you know, when the lights come on, right? But yeah, it's a great atmosphere. I love this place. It's actually my favorite bar, and I would love for you guys to approve the new location so people have, you know, a good place to go to and have fun, just kind of, you know, get away from work and just kind of decompress. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in favor of the project? Seeing no additional speakers in favor, are there, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Delia Navarro. Have some handout? Is that okay?
Let me provide them to the clerk, who will distribute them. Thank you.
I come to you today as a mom, as an educator, and as the owner of the Sylvan Learning Center located at 2720 Callaway Drive,住在 suite A, and I'm writing this letter to request the rejection of the issuance of a conditional permit for the cocktail lounge. The common definition of a bar includes pool tables and darts, which according to the floor plan, this proposed site clearly is. It's my understanding that the permit has yet to be approved, which is why this public hearing is being held. So I was surprised when construction work or build-out and tenant improvement began last month, before the public hearing and before the approval of the permit. I appreciate this opportunity to voice my concerns that are shared with our parents, teachers, our neighbors regarding this permit's approval. For 17 years, Sylvan has offered instruction to children as young as four years old at our WASCA-credited school. You can see that in Exhibit A. In addition to the families who trust us with their educational needs, we also contract with local school districts and teach their children in our center. Just this past summer, we delivered instruction to hundreds of students in our center through our partnership with local school districts and through funding through the California Department of Education. Moreover, our North American Industry Classification System Code, or NAICS, it's under the parent category of all other schools and instruction. You can see that on Exhibit B. And according to the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control's website, the law says that ABC may deny any retail license located within at least 600 feet of schools, public playgrounds, and nonprofit youth facilities. public playgrounds, and nonprofit youth facilities. Generally, ABC will deny a license in the above situations when there is evidence that normal operation of the licensed premises will be contrary to public welfare and morals. Our door to the proposed site is 80 feet. There is no doubt that this permit would not be issued across the street from a public or private school, which for the mention, the reasons I mentioned, I ask you to view Sylvan Learning Center as equivalent, too, because many in our community do see us at this school for over 20 years. Our children's safety is our top priority. There are times our Sylvan students walk from our center to classes at the Japan Martial Arts Academy. It's the red building you see in the picture there, immediately after their Sylvan class. The parking lot for the bar would be the east wall that is designated for them, but it is our Sylvan Learning Center wall. Our parents don't use that or have no problem with that, but the students will be leaving. Sylvan would need to cross directly through the parking lot that the people exiting the bar will be using and past the front entrance to the bar in order to reach the front door of the martial arts school, where they also have students as young as four years old. The entrance to the bar is only about 80 feet from our Sylvan entrance, as you can see in Exhibit C. During standard, during standard time during the winter months, as you know, it begins to get dark during the four o'clock hour, which can prove dangerous to children walking through a parking lot, a bar parking lot. There would also be an increased probability of the occurrence of altercations and brawls during instruction, as our learning center has regularly been open until 8:00 PM at times and is open six days a week, Monday through Saturday. It's our understanding that there was also an altercation or a shooting in the previous location back in February of 2021 at their last location. The limited parking in this plaza is already filled with young children from Doors, from Sylvan, from Japan Martial Arts Academy. And the addition of drivers exiting a bar can bring nothing but trouble. We can all agree that bargoers and alcohol do not mix with school-aged children. That is why they're not next to schools. There are other less child-focused business areas where this proposed business would be more suitable. We're not opposed to family-owned businesses such as theirs. We ourselves are a family-owned business. And in addition to the Sylvan Learning Center, there is the family-friendly Doors at the end of the driveway, the Japan Martial Arts Academy, and the learning experience with the playground, mind you, all in close proximity to the proposed bar. And I speak on behalf of all the family-friendly businesses in this plaza, the Sylvan parents we serve now and in the future, and educators of our community, as I ask you to consider the safety of our children and our collective objection to the issuance of this conditional use permit and humbly request its denial. We have many letters from parents that I believe you already have, as well as our center director, who has expressed her concern with regards to the safety of exiting the center at that hour. And I just appreciate your time and consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please come forward, state your name and proceed. Seeing no additional speakers in opposition, does any commissioner have any questions for the public or staff on this item? Please remember, this is not the time to express any opinion on the matter, only to ask questions. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Keter. I was hoping somebody was gonna give me a picture of where the buildings were in relation to each other, so thank you for providing that, because, I got it. Thank you. No opinions at this time, right? Just questions? All right.
Commissioner Coleman, I think you know the answer to that question.
Yeah. This is for staff, then. Do we have any city ordinances that refer to how close these kind of establishments can be from schools and other kinds of, these kinds of, tutoring is, I guess it's technically not a school, but I think we all get it, that there are kids there, so.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Coleman. Although I can't read the whispers from Principal Planner Hockes, the city uses a conditional use permit to provide for findings of compatibility when varying uses are in proximity to one another. Consequently, conditions of approval are created to provide that compatibility. Ultimately, the commission must make a decision as to whether the use is compatible with its surroundings and that the conditions of approval adequately provide that compatibility.
And is, is the, does the ABC license follow the conditional use permit or is it vice versa? Are we, are we gonna approve something that's not gonna get an ABC license or?
Well, that could happen, but the two licenses are conditional use, which is a local permit, and the state license, which is through ABC. They're run concurrently with one another typically. And so there is a possibility for ABC to not allow for or not permit that license. And essentially, in the end, that makes the city's use permit essentially null and void because both of those permits run concurrently with one another. By the same token, if the city were to deny the use permit, ABC would not typically grant that, grant their permit because they really go hand-in-hand.
Okay. And then I was gonna ask this question about any police activity at their last location. And then the last speaker mentioned a shooting in 2021. Staff had any information on that? Has any inquiry been made to either the city or the county police on responses there?
Staff did do outreach to the city police department. They had no knowledge of a shooting occurring in the site. The information that was provided to staff was that there were, I believe, 36 or 38 calls for service to the site in the past year. So roughly about a call for service every two weeks, maybe every week and a half. Generally, the police department found the business to be a good operator.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Neal, and then.
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation. My question is actually for staff. I see that in the staff report, it says here that the conditional use permit that these applicants are seeking has been requested several other times. In the, in the last six years, there have been eight other requests. One is pending, one is the current request, so there are six others. In those other six instances, were any of them granted when there was a school or a school-like use nearby, say, within less than 600 feet?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Neal. I'm going to have to rely upon staff's analysis of the report. Mr. Hockes, do you have any additional information that would help answer that question for Ms. Neal?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Is that, this staff report or are you looking at reading cinema staff report where they requested a number of CUPs?
This is for Item 6A. And it's down on page... I think it's page two. Yeah, page two. It's similar requests. It's about three paragraphs from the bottom of page two. It says, "Staff notes that in the last six years, there have been eight requests to allow an establishment selling alcohol, alcoholic beverages for unsite consumption where such use is the primary business in the C2 regional commercial zone." This includes, and then it lists six permits, the current permit, permit request and one that is pending.
Thank you, Mr. Hockes. I think the information that's being provided is more of a reference to the frequency that a permit for the sale of alcohol or beverages occur in the city. And it wouldn't have any information specific to those specific locations where those use permits were requested. So I'm afraid I can't fully answer your question at this point in juncture.
Thank you for that.
Is this, you're saying that these are not...
Correct.
What I'm hearing is that these were, these were conditional use permits for alcoholic beverages in the C2 zone, but staff had not looked into whether these permit requests were within 600 feet or whatever proximity of a school or school-like use.
Thank you. Not as a component of this analysis.
Commissioner Neal, do you have any additional questions at this time? Thank you. Commissioner Lomis, I believe, you're up.
For the applicant, I've got a couple of questions. If you don't mind, is that okay?
Yes, please come to the microphone. Thank you.
Two questions, I think. One is, what's the occupancy on the new building?
Okay, the suite, the two suites combined are 2,600. Once you put the, the plans are not done yet, but once you get the plans together, the couches, the chairs, the pool tables, the bar, it's gonna be an occupancy of about between 80 and 90, max.
You don't have 80 or 90 seats in there. Okay.
That's standing room, yes, so they allow for that. Fire marshal says anything over 99 needs to be bigger and have fire sprinklers. That's why we looked at that building. There's not a lot of fire sprinklers. It has to be above 10,000 square feet. That building's 72. And let me make note, where our location is right now, there is actually a learning center at our back door and the parents pick up...
This is not the time for that, sorry.
No, I know, but there is...
Sorry, I'm asking, you have to...
Okay.
I'll get the chairman on you, because you gotta answer just the questions I'm asking. Okay?
Now's the time, yeah, just answer any commissioner questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry. I used to be chairman, so I can't help it. I'm counting about 50, around there, 50 seats.
Yeah, I mean, that's just people that are standing that don't say, you know, if wheelchair access, handicap, you know, whatever, they don't want no more than 90 in there.
Gotcha. The second question I have for you is, how do you plan on accommodating smokers?
Smokers now at the back. If you look in, I've also provided plenty of pamphletry, done plenty of recon on this place since July. There's two exits out the back. There's two in the front. The smoking is delegated straight for the back in the alley where the dumpsters are. There's an area out there for smoking. Security is at that door, too. There's, no one comes in, no one comes out with alcohol. All the alcohol stays inside the building, smoking's out back.
Would, is smoking allowed at the front?
Smoking is not allowed in the front.
Is that a part of the CUP?
It's in the least, it is in the least. The first person we asked was the karate school and they said they had no problem with us because they closed at 8:00 o'clock and he was welcoming us.
Again, I'm just answering my questions about smoking.
Okay, but there's no smoking because of his front door.
Okay, that's all my questions for you. Thank you. Staff, is it addressed in the CUP for smoking? I didn't see anything. I'm just asking to see if I missed it.
I don't have the condition of approval right at the tip of my tongue. I would advise the commission that they so desire to add a condition of approval that provided for specifics as it relates to where smoking can occur, that's well within the perusal of and authority of the commission.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. Are there any other commissioner questions? I had two, yeah, two quick questions for staff. This is kind of a question, just to inform, so we're looking at this, the sale of alcohol on this site, namely because they do not serve food. Is that correct?
That's correct. Alcohol as a primary focus of the business.
So a restaurant with a similar bar serving would not have to come before us or be considered in this zone?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then just to clarify, and this, this is a question for staff or the applicant, because the applicant might know better. Your current site in the C2 zone, do you have a conditional use permit for that site?
Yes, sir.
The current, okay, thank you. All right, those were my two questions. And so now is, thank you. So I believe that concludes commissioner questions. We're now moving into time of rebuttal. Let me quickly explain how this process goes. So unlike the previous speaking time, this is a five-minute total time for all speakers. Five minutes for those in favor, those five minutes total for those in opposition. As we just heard, as we just heard from the opposition, we, we will begin with those in favor of the project. And so please note, that's a five-minute total for all speakers. So I would recommend, since there are a lot of members of the audience here in support, if you would like to speak during the rebuttal period, feel free to come to the front of the seats so that the speaker before you can be aware of others that would like to make comments. So with that, we will begin with those in favor and then those in opposition will be given five-minute rebuttal total time as well. So with that, is there anyone who wishes to provide a rebuttal on this item? If so, please be prepared to step to this podium. Like I described, each side will only have five minutes, so make your comments succinctly without repeating the remarks of a previous speaker to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. After the rebuttal period, or after everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so, or if no one comes to the microphone, I will close the rebuttal period. So with that, with that, we will open for a five-minute rebuttal period for those in favor of the project. So if the, if the first speaker for those in favor would like to come, and Madam Clerk, if you would set the five-minute clock, we will begin upon the first speaker. And please state your name for the record.
I am the applicant. My name is Richard Fidler. Our location currently is at 2816 Callaway. In my rebuttal, I would like to let the commission know that we are already within 300 feet of this learning center, not to mention there is a learning center at our back door. That learning center is owned by my previous landlord and the two buildings next to it. He owns all of that property, except for the building we are applying for and the one, this one is at. So her complaint is valid, but she is already next to us. We've been there for 10 years. Now, our business, let me be clear about it, it is strictly, basically, 90% of it is after 9:00. 9:00 PM to 1:30, lights on. That is when we are there. Her concern, walking kids to the karate school. I forgot the letter from the karate owner. He is retired law enforcement and he was the first person I asked, because I didn't even notice that learning center, because there's never any cars over there. I asked the karate school, "What's your hours of operation?" He said, "Four to eight." I said, "We want to put a location there." He had three questions. "Do you have security? How late do you open? Do you have food?" And I said, "No." He said, "Well, I close at 8:00. You'll see me there." And that was his exact wordage. He does not dispute this location. Neither does DeWors. However, she keeps bringing those places up. That shooting was not at our location. It was in a parking lot down the way. And I printed out KGT's 17th News Report on it regarding the crime report and it was, all the charges were dropped and that one shooting was a reckless shooting of a firearm and that's already been settled last July. Any other disputes regarding children? That is not fair. I have grandchildren and the first thing they do when I pick them up from school, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, they want to go to my work. They want me to go inside and get them a soda. They want to go to Party City. That's where the old Party City is. They know this location. This is what we do. I don't do anything else. I run a bar business with my family and I've been doing it for 14 years. I'm in my mid-50s. There is no other plan for us. This is what we do. We have a year to get out of our spot because we're not gonna stay there and we want to stay in this location. We are not gonna be a nuisance to them because we're not gonna see them. I have their hours of operations printed out and I gave it to the clerks here. Their hours basically are the opposite of ours. We don't even start getting busy till Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. They're closed by 7:00. We go on those days and they're closed. The karate school is the same. The karate school is four to eight, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday, they're not even open. Friday, Saturday and Sunday is where we get 90% of our income in the evening when everybody's at home. There's no children walking around this parking lot. As she says, I've watched and filmed families sitting... As she says, I've watched and filmed families sitting out in their cars waiting for the kids to walk out, and they get in their cars. They're not going to let a kid run around or go to the ice cream store or the liquor store that's already right next to us. They're not going to let that happen. So I'm just asking, we're not trying to muck up the area. We're trying to build it up. We're trying to make it better. It's not on a main road, and it's going to be simple. And we will very rarely see these people because we're not working the same times as them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a minute fifty. The clock should be continuing, I believe, with the five-minute total time. So we do have a minute fifty if there are any additional speakers in the rebuttal period.
My name is Robert Ripley. Just to add to what Mr. Fidler said, you see the people here, you've seen the people who talk. These are not criminals. These are not violent people. These are not drunkards and rowdy people. These are people of our community. These are people who go to work every single day, just like everybody else. And it is an unfair characterization to say that there is going to be violence, there's going to be shootings. They are already right next to a daycare center for very young children. I'm a father of an infant. I would not hesitate to take my child, if he needed daycare, to the ABC Learning Center right next door. Absolutely not. This is not the type of place that somebody would characterize as rowdy, as drunkards. It's not a nightclub. It's a family bar with chess, pool, darts, and domino. The loudest I've ever seen anybody get in there was cheering for a football game when their team is playing. That's the type of location that this is. It is unfair to characterize it any other way. Thank you.
Thank you. 30 seconds remaining. If there are any final comments, succinct comments, please step to the microphone. Otherwise, seeing no additional speakers, we will close the rebuttal period for those in favor and move to rebuttal comments for those in opposition to the project. Thank you. Oh, Madam Clerk, we should, yeah, thank you. Are there any speakers wishing to provide rebuttal comments in opposition? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Again, Delia Navarro. Just wanted to point out that, again, this is a trusted educational institution in our community for over 20 years. And the big difference is 80 feet from our door to theirs. Yes, the parking lot may not be full of cars, but that's because parents trust us. They have for over 20 years. They drop off their kids, and they trust us. As you can see from some of the letters from our parents, they don't want a bar next to their school for their children. We work and partner with local parents, doctors, educators. We have a lot of school districts, as I mentioned before, that we have over two dozen school districts throughout Kern County and throughout that we've partnered with and brought students from the school districts into our facility. They've trusted us to be their school for their children. And so for us to be able to say that we have a neighborhood bar next door, within 80 feet of our doors, is going to definitely undermine some of that trust that our parents have in us. So as a family-owned business ourselves, we ask you to consider our perspective. We have been established there for such a long time. Our parents have been with us, many of them, for many, many years. And we continue to do so much for the children of our community, so we thank you for your consideration tonight.
I turned myself off. Sorry. Thank you. Seeing how we had a single speaker in opposition tonight provide rebuttal comments, I will offer up anyone else who wishes to speak in rebuttal comments in opposition. But seeing no speakers at this time, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Lomis.
I'll just ask a couple of questions. Ms. Navarro, I'd like to just ask you a simple question, if you don't mind. Just one question. Are children allowed to wait outside for their parents to be picked up?
Only if they've signed an authorization form, specifically allowing them to walk to the karate place.
To the karate place?
The martial arts ninja, if their parent has allowed them to, they can walk directly to that place. Or if they walk to their car or near the neighborhood, they have an authorization, a transportation that they would sign that would allow them to leave without us walking them over.
And your practice without that authorization?
Without the authorization, we would have to walk them over.
Walk them over?
To their class or to their destination. To their karate class, the karate class.
The class, understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't go too far, because I want to ask who a person is that wrote a letter on your behalf. Maybe you could help me with that? I'm so sorry, I forgot about that one. A mister, I want to know who he is, and I bet you could tell me. Okay, who is Mr. Russell Gardner?
He is the owner of the 2720 Callaway, the building next to the 9600.
Next to the 20, okay. I'm sorry. So he is from the property to the building to the north or to the?
The west.
To the west?
The one that, the building where Sylvan Learning Center is?
Okay.
All the way down to the insurance?
Just wondering who he is. He's inaccurate, and I'll address that. Thank you for telling me who he is. Thank you. When I was reading this, I was reading the letters of opposition, I'm reading the letters that are in favor, and one thing that was misrepresented is that Mr. Gardner says that the Sylvan Learning Center is open till 8 o'clock at night. And I checked your website hours, and you're open till 6:30. And on Saturday, you're only open till 1:00 p.m. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Checked your website and Google, and your hours are very consistent through social, through the media.
We change our hours based on parent need. And so at the moment, because of the time change, we're closed at 6:30. But we have been open until 7:30 p.m. regularly during the school year, and that we are also open on Saturdays. And if there isn't a parent need at that exact time, then we will adjust the hours.
But right, I'm sorry.
Currently, at the moment, it's the 6:30 until the parents request a later time.
What I'm showing is Monday through Thursday, you're open from 9:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Yes?
That is correct for instructional hours. Our staff often will have to wait with the student until they're picked up, different students that are in our center. So right now, that's often closer to 7:00 formally.
But those are your hours?
Correct.
Thank you. And Saturday, or excuse me, Fridays by appointment?
By appointment.
And Sunday, excuse me, Saturday is 9:00 to 1:00. Is what your published hours are. Are they correct or not?
At the moment, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And I did check with Japan. No, thank you. So sorry to make you keep running up and back and forth. Interesting, I found no opposition from the martial arts, who's actually more affected by your location. The parking looks like an issue, but you're right, people Uber. So there's not a lot of parking there. But we're doing pickups, and you've got Uber. And so I'm okay in my head with the parking. I do have a problem with the smokers. I'm an ex-smoker, so nothing's more annoying than an ex-smoker. But for, out of respect for your neighbors, I would like to suggest imposing a condition that that take place in the back, so that you aren't imposing on your neighbors. And I'm going to finish my deal. I see, what else? Yeah, this one's a hard one, because we have to, we have to weigh bass juice, and it's hard. This one's a hard one. I've been up here a long time. This one's a hard one. So in weighing the, we want to promote small businesses, especially in today's day and age. We want to promote commerce. We want to, we want to promote neighborhood continuity and everybody get along, but there are times that we're going to clash. And so we are the ones that try to sift through it and figure out what's the best, the best thing to do. For me, it's been hard, but, and I walked in here thinking, I don't know about this, but seeing the information that's been presented, the applicant has presented information, and it has all been accurate. The information presented on the, on the opposition has not all been accurate. So you have brought your community with you. That speaks to me. And I will, with that condition, I will support your conditional use permit tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomis. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Coleman, is that, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair Keter, I appreciate it. I'm going to immediately change personal trainers, because your personal trainer goes from the gym to the bar, and mine doesn't let me do that. So, yeah, I struggled this a little bit myself. I guess my thing is if there was food involved, then we wouldn't be having this discussion. And I struggle because I thought I knew of places in town where they have this, you know, the Colonial Shopping Center, Ming and New Stein. For a long time, there was a, it wasn't a Sylvan Learning Center, but it was similar. It was a tutoring school, and there's also a bar in that shopping center. I think that's turned over now since that occurred, but it wouldn't be the first time this happened in our community. I think that we are trying to promote diversity in these shopping centers, and I don't mean ethnic or whatever, I think just in different kinds of businesses, because when we start to get too many of similar industries, then that's when we start to have blight, when the economy changes and those kind of things. So I think we need to have a mix of different kinds of businesses. I don't see a reason as proposal to deny this.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Bashkretz.
Yeah, I respect both of your opinions, and I appreciate you coming up and sharing your perspectives and all of that. And we live in 2022. There's a lot of data out there and facts, and you can pretty much bypass opinions by just looking at research and facts. And the beautiful thing about Google is it actually tracks, because you have so many apps, it shows you where people are and shows you trafficked areas. And so if you Google the Sylvan, you Google the whiskey barrel currently, you can see when you have the most amount of traffic, people's phones being sent to your locations. And I'm looking at the different hours, and I'm looking at, you know, when Sylvan is the most busiest, and I'm looking at when you guys are the most busiest. And it really is a pretty big separation in overlapping. You have most of your traffic at the Sylvan Learning Center during the time when the whiskey barrel is at its absolute lowest occupancy. Now, I know that that's going to change in a newer location, and it's going to have more people, but the opinion of the karate center next door, you know, would weigh heavy on me. And I have three kids. I have three kids, and I would move heaven and earth to protect them. So it hits close, but you know, data is data, and it's hard to disagree and lie with, something that tracks you and tells you where people are at what time and when they have the most of that. So that's all I have. Yeah.
Can you tell me how to use my phone? That's why I'm here.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Bashkretz offered to stay behind to offer a quick Google tutorial to anyone that would like to learn, to look at the right side of the Google search. Commissioner Neal.
All right. Thank you for everybody that came out to speak tonight. I am the newest commissioner. I also happen to, as my profession, build schools and work on school facilities and keeping them safe, and working with the California Department of Education and my school district clients to have safe school facilities. So when a safety concern regarding students is raised, my antenna goes up, because there's no bigger advocate for student safety with regard to real estate than myself. So I heard the points raised, and I have, if you replay the tapes, I always think about the kids. So that's always a major concern for me. But I'm reading the materials, and I'm hearing the other commissioners, I'm hearing your testimony. And it seems to me that if there is a place where kids frequent right next to you, right on the other, on the other side, and they don't see an issue either, then maybe there isn't an issue. And if there's data showing that the times of use are really separated, that is pretty moving for me, because we do have to share space, and we all love something different. And what I love about this role is, on the commission, is that we get to kind of weigh in on which way we want to see our city go. And I come from the Bay Area, I studied there, and there's bars and everything right next to everything. Everything's close, because they don't have the benefit of real estate like we do in Bakersfield. We've been able to separate diverse uses, and that's caused us to cluster in ways in Bakersfield that isn't, I think that keeps us from being a real metro-type city and moving in that direction. So the idea of diversifying uses, it actually, it's appealing to me. And absent some sort of, I wish that staff had looked at the other similar conditional use permits to tell us, you know, how, if any of those had the issues that were being opposed in terms of proximity, because I think that would have been highly supportive for us. But all that being said, you know, I came in here ready to say no. I did. But I can't really see a reason to say no.
Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Yeah, I, you know, one of the opportunities I have as chair is to get to listen to my other commissioners before I get to give my comments, which I just, I know these conditional use processes are stressful and weighty, and so I don't mean to make light of them, but I feel like tonight has been a very engaging conversation about space, about use, about adjacency, about neighboring. When I read the staff report, there was a lot that pulled you in different directions, you know, the concern of small children, the reputation that drinking establishments can have, the, but I just, first of all, I always want to acknowledge, people, members of the community showing up for these hearings means so much to all of us. The stories you can paint, the stories you can tell, are ones that we will not, we wouldn't read in a staff report. So coming, giving your statements, advocating for the things you believe in matters. And so we have 77 YouTube viewers, so to the 77 Youtubers, please come in person, engage in the process. But I just want to thank everyone on both sides that came out tonight, because I think your opinions are valuable and they matter. So with the staff report comes a lot of different exhibits, and one exhibit I think is fascinating. If, Madam Clerk, if you could pull up the exhibit surrounding use map?
That's a good one.
Yeah, it's very, it's a very good one. So if you look at this surrounding use map, well, that's the other one. well, that's the other one I was gonna reference. But the Surrounding Use Map is a little more user-friendly, a little bit further out. The one that shows the surrounding areas. It's a different attachment. Sorry, I'm drawing, I'm dragging my comments out even longer. I apologize. But essentially, when you look at an aerial of the surrounding community, one thing is interesting is everything west of the, of the Northwest Promenade is all C2-zoned. In that, you have a gas station, you have a drugstore, you have a jewelry shop, you have an ice cream shop, you have a preschool, you have an existing bar, you have a mini-mart, you have restaurants. I mean, the C2-zone is a very all-incompensating cornucopia of if you dream it, you can probably locate it in a C2-zone. And I think, to me, that shows that there's also a zone where there's a lot of tension. There's not an educational zone overlay, or a medical zone overlay, or it's not even a professional zone overlay that really says these uses are not appropriate. This is kind of a, if you dream it, you can probably fit it into here somewhere. And to some of those uses, you need a conditional use, because with it comes a bad reputation, or maybe an undeserving qualifier to your business. And I would just say that, to me, it speaks volumes that the reputation of this applicant tonight has been tested by a very close adjacency to a learning center at their current location. I do think, I really wish that image could be pulled up. I would say, as we zoom into the exact configuration, so my daughters are two and four, and they are obsessed with the Dora's Singing Moose. And so we find ourselves at this ice cream shop more frequently than not. And I think this is a very interesting, because we are not a community that's usually very spatially constrained, but this is a very awkward shopping center to get in and out of. And so part of the concern about children wandering around, I am terrified of my children wandering around this area, just because you are by a, by Callaway, and you are next to a sump with a screened wall. I mean, I think regardless of who your neighbor is, this is a, this is a part of Bakersfield where you want to watch out where kids are wandering, because it's, it's not pedestrian friendly. So independent of that, I think C2 doesn't really allow us to say what uses, if you're, if you're conditioned in it, you can have these adjacencies that are a little funny. And I think that, yeah, I think the applicant has presented a very, a very clear value to the community. I think in a neighborhood that has become, you can throw a rock and hit four chain restaurants. It is very, I'm a big believer that, that local entrepreneurs, dreamers, business owners define cities and places. People don't travel to go to a Red Lobster. They travel to go to this local saloon that they've heard so much about. And so I would say it's exciting to see that anchored in a part of town that's not really known for the small, the small business success that you've been so lucky to have. So with that, I will just affirm the other statements made by the Commission and request that a motion be made. And then remember that Commissioner Lomas is, did you already technically make a motion?
No, I haven't.
Oh.
No, I haven't, but I'll dovetail into what you're saying in that, yes, that you explained it very nicely about a C2-zone. And I loved what you said about, you know, shared space. But the CUP process gives us that opportunity to just kind of fine-tune it, to make sure that you are good neighbors. And so I think the system works, and I think it played out very well tonight, that, that we will have, Bakersfield will have another nice new project. So I would look to staff to fashion the language, to add the restriction that the smoking takes place in the back of the property and not the front.
I have taken that liberty to prepare a conditional approval for your digestion. It would be that any smoking associated with the use shall occur in a designated smoking area to be located outside to the rear of the business. No smoking shall occur at the front of the business.
And I think that'll make you a better neighbor. And with that, I will make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. May I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Bashertash. May I, Commissioners, cast your votes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade and Commissioner Biddle absent with restriction on the smoking location located in the back.
Thank you. As mentioned, we will move on to the next item. But note that 6B, public hearing on 6B has been, the item has been referred back to staff. And so we will now move on to item 5B, which was pulled from the consent calendar. Mr. Boyle, will you prepare your report, or provide your report on item 5B?
Thank you, Chair Cader. Principal Planner, Hockes, will make a presentation.
I apologize, I'm getting to that slide. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Tony Hockes, Principal Planner with Development Services Department. I'm here to present 5B, Conditional Use Permit 2201-22-0188. Consolidated Entertainment LLC, the applicant, is representing, representing Valley Plaza Mall LP, the property owner. The Target, excuse me. The site is located at 2000 Wybo Road, south of the Valley Plaza and Target Department Store. It is Zoned C2. The request before you today is a consolid, is a conditional use permit to allow serving of alcohol at the existing movie theater, Reading Cinemas. January 10th, 2017, the Board of Zoning Adjustment approved CUP 160421 to allow serving of alcohol at this location. February 15th, 2017, the City Council considered an appeal to the BZA's approval of CUP 160421 by the neighbors for a safe Valley Plaza. Following the deliberations, the appeal was upheld, and CUP 160421 was denied. July 9th, 2019, the Board of Zoning Adjustment approved CUP 190208 to allow the serving of alcohol at this location, Reading Cinemas. July 19th, 2021, the approved conditional use permit, 190208, became null and void since two years after the effective date the applicant or successor did not actually commence the rights granted, nor was the request for an extension of time submitted. The applicant notes this was a unique and uncertain time for the movie industry because of COVID pandemic. This conditional use permit request is much the same that was previously approved, but has since become null and void because the use did not commence within the allotted time. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit 220188, including the memo distributed to Commission today. That concludes my presentation of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Yep. Seeing no speakers, and actually, I don't, maybe one member of the public? Oh, it's Harrison, all right. I thought he came for the item, maybe he wants to, yeah. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, step to microphone and proceed. Are there any, well, seeing that there are no public speakers, I will make them, we all, I will close the public hearing and move for comment and action and questions at the same time. All right. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Cader. I'm just dragging this out, so you guys can't do any Christmas shopping. I have made a question or concern to staff. I talked to staff about this just before the meeting, and I didn't have a chance to talk to the, to the director. But in this, I'm trying to get back to it now. Yeah, in this staff report, it talks about a project analysis, and it says in here that as proposed, the theater is requesting to allow service and consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits to and by patrons 21 years or older in mixed-age screening theater. I, I had a little problem with that word "by", because we don't want patrons, you know, distributing and selling alcohol, I don't think. And I have a, also have a concern about the modification to item 6D that we got here today, which was the applicant requesting to be able to serve quantities. Instead of 16, they want to change that to 22 ounces for beer, and mixed drinks to 16 ounces. Those are basically doubles. And I, I do have a little bit of concern about hard liquor and that volume. So I don't know if we can get some kind of concession on that, or should we refer this to staff, or what? Sure.
Studio Movie Grill has these sizes.
Do they?
Yeah.
There's a Dave and Buster's that just opened right next door, too, which is, it's like their thing.
All right, so I'll drop my opposition to the doubles. In lieu of getting that, I don't, I just want to be sure that we changed the language in that. I don't know if that's part of the actual, the actual, we're talking about the actual condition or not, if that's just a language problem in the way it was written.
I appreciate your concerns, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair, Chair Cader. I think what we would have preferred that, that statement to say would be sale to and consumption by. And there were some efficiencies in our writing styles. Nonetheless, the staff report wouldn't be carried over or be a component of the approval. The conditional approval therein would, would guide the use in that particular location. So I'll, I guess what I would say is that we'll take your recommendation in terms of writing, and I'll take that to note, and and appreciate the correction on your part.
Before we make a motion, there are other Commissioners that would wish to speak.
Okay.
So Commissioner Neal.
Just a question for staff. So for beer, mixed drinks, and wine, we are, do these, I guess, the volume, does this match other similar uses? So I see wine was reduced to eight ounces. I love wine. But I'm just, I'm just wondering why it was reduced to eight. I mean, where are we getting these numbers from? That's all I'm asking.
I'll defer to Mr. Hockes as it relates to the rationale for the particular sizes.
From the past, CUPs such as Studio Movie Grill have the similar sizes, as well as AMC. There might have been one change with the AMC, but for the most part, they're pretty consistent. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ounce designations or general requests for specific types of alcohol? All right. Seeing none, Commissioner Coleman, do you want to? I think, need a motion? It's a hearing now, isn't it?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Commissioner Lomas, with a motion to adopt staff's recommendation?
Yeah. I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Neal. Commissioners, raise your glass and cast your vote.
Motion passes with Commissioner Wade and Commissioner Biddle absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item seven, communications.
Does staff have any communication items? Mr. Boyle?
No communications.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, Commission comments.
Does any Commissioner have any comments? Ask Commissioner Coleman, and then Commissioner Neal.
This is our last meeting of 2023, so I, I want to wish all staff and all the people that are here a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And thanks, staff, and everybody that's here tonight for all that you do for us, all your law, and to keep us honest. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Neal.
Ditto. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Bashertash.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, for filling in tonight and stepping up to help us have a great meeting and for all of the information that you brought. And thank my fellow Commissioners for, especially the ones that have been here for a while, the experience and wisdom that you've lent us, and I've learned a lot this year, and I look forward to our futures together.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I should also take a moment as part of a delayed communication.
So there are communications.
Let the minutes reflect, yeah.
It could be that I'd like to be on the camera, but that's probably not the case.
Now is not the time to speak.
I just want to make note that there is no item scheduled for 1-5, and there will be no January 5th meeting, but there will be a meeting held on January 19th. And I, I want to thank Vice Chair for his kind words. It was a pleasure being here.
Fantastic. Then I will round this out. Commissioner Lomas wanted me to know that she does not have any comments. So she does not wish us neither a Merry Christmas or a Happy New Year. She just wants, she just wants to get home. But I would also just like to resound the other Commissioners and say it's been a pretty fantastic year, I think getting to discuss some very important things for our city. And so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Yep. And we will see you on January 19th, I believe. So with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned 7:00 PM on the dot.